You're listening to the anointed sounds of Bobby beautiful music. Release your musical tracks today. You're listening to the anointed sounds of Bobby beautiful music. Release your musical tracks today. Welcome to the journey.
Good evening beloved brethren, once again, y'all probably saying, what is this deja vu? Didn't you say, good evening a few minutes ago? Have you seen, we're starting this all over again? Well, listen beloved, I want brother Linden to take us to the throne of mercy again, because I want to share with y'all something from the mouth of a child, my 10 year old daughter, and what she said in connection to what just happened. Brother Linden, again, please take us to the throne of mercy. And just real quick, before you do that, brother Linden, you see the beloved, the difference that we have today in opposed to what the children of Israel had in the desert? They can only go on a tabernacle, not even really them, they had to take their requests to Moses and Aaron, and then Moses and Aaron had to go into the tabernacle and present themselves before God. They didn't have that ready, accessible and easy access like we have now. Because we just approached our Father in prayer 15 minutes to a half an hour ago, and now we're going back to the throne of mercy. Beloved, bless God, that we're living under Jesus's grace, under Jesus's Sabbath. Brother Linden, please take us to the throne of mercy.
Yes, I'm glad that you mentioned that. And I'm gonna read a verse, you know, before I pray. When you are in prayer dialogue with God, always. And I'm gonna start, brother Scott just reminded me. Our main goal is to return to our resting place. And our resting place, our safe dwelling is Jesus Christ. He is our Sabbath vest, he is our shelter, he's our rock, he's our fortress, he's a strong tower. The righteous run into that tower and they are safe, they call him the name. And I'm gonna read this to encourage you. And we're going to start out with, Lord, let's return to rest. Return to your rest, my soul, for the Lord has been good to you. Whoever tried to sabotage this Bible study, forgive them. They don't know what they're doing. But we pray that you'll forgive them and be merciful to them as you have been merciful to us. Father, you are awesome, awesome God. We have never seen anybody so this unfailing love to us. And we can never earn your love, Father. We can never meet that standard. So we're so thankful for your grace. We're so thankful for your word, your son, your precious one and only son. Thank you for wooing us to your presence. Thank you for loving us, rescuing us, delivering us. Thank you for talking to us. Thank you for being that shade when the heat intensified. Thank you for being that rock for us to stand on in the waters rage, try to drown us. So bless each and every individual who's participating in this Bible study. Then light their hearts, let them know that all this journey is about is you. This. So bless this, this study, sweet fellowship. In your name, in the Holy Spirit. Amen.
And amen. I was a mother and she said, I was rerounding up your troops. She said these very words. She said daddy, go on ahead and call up the troops again, because we cannot let Satan think that he is one. Beloved, do you see? As we're in the book of Numbers, that the children of Israel were faced with giants. Do y'all see the giant that just presented himself, his ugly self tonight? And I'm not talking about the person or persons that did it in a disparaging way. Because just like brother Linden said, brother Linden prayed for that person or these persons. And that's exactly what we're supposed to do. Exactly what brother Linden did, I was great calling my baby brother. But exactly what brother Linden did is what we're supposed to do. Because these are persons, these are souls, that if they don't get it right. You see, you have to understand something. The world is already condemned. Scripture clearly says, scripture clearly says this. For God so loved the world that. That who would have everlasting life? Verse 18 of John chapter 3 goes on further to say. As far, he that believes upon Jesus is not condemned, but he that believes not is condemned already. Those persons that did what they did tonight, they're already lost. They don't have to get lost, they're already lost. They are already well on their way to hell. And that is something that we as Christians have to have our hearts broken about. Our Father, whom art in heaven, doesn't desire for any to be destroyed. He doesn't desire for any to be lost. Remember, there was a high cost that was paid. Beloved, each and every one of you, think about something, and I'm talking about a secular item or carnal item. Think of that which is highly precious and extremely valuable to you. Just take a moment to think about it. I come and brother Linden and sister Gail and some of the other older ones within the study to what I'm saying. We grew up in a time, and I was greatly exposed to this one, once I moved to Queens. We grew up in a time where like our friends we used to play with, little Greg, Ronnie, and some of the other ones. These persons, their parents had their lovely homes. And I wasn't used to not being able. Now, people to come in and out of their house through the front doors, because they didn't want their carpet, they didn't want their living room furniture messed up, and so on and so forth. So think about that which is most precious to you, whether it's a house, a car, your stock, your bond, your bank account, your TV, whatever it is, think about how precious that is to you. And how you would feel if it was damaged, lost, or stolen. Beloved, if you have to understand that mankind is precious. David asked the question, what is man that thou art mindful of him? In other words, David was saying, Lord, who am I? Who is mankind that you take out from being God to think about us? I made mention before, God doesn't need human beings, he doesn't. He doesn't need our praise. When we say hallelujah, no give thanks unto the Lord, when I brought Linden in under the new lane, the first thing he said was hallelujah. God doesn't need that. You see, that doesn't magnify God for us to glorify and praise him. And it doesn't reduce anything about God if we don't magnify or praise him. All of this is done for our benefit. Scripture says, every knee will bow and every tongue will confess to the Lord Jesus Christ. Now you have the opportunity of doing it here, where it's going to be to your benefit, or you will be forced to do it on the other side. Adolf Hitler, he refused to bow his knee and he refused to confess with his tongue, the Lord Jesus Christ, on this side. He died in the early 1900s. But you better believe that when Adolf Hitler is called out of the grave, and he stands before the glorified Lord Jesus Christ, he will bow his knee on the earth, and he will confess with his tongue, in his German language, he will confess the Lord Jesus Christ. Beloved, please understand that all of us has to bow down to our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. These Bible studies that we have, we have these studies because we want y'all to bow down to the Lord Jesus Christ right now. Because on the other side, it will be too late. It will absolutely be too late. And beloved, I just want to share with you what Adolf Hitler will say, once he's raised out of the graves. In his German tongue. Der Herr Jesus Christus. That is D E R H E R R J E S U S C H R I S T U S. That's what Adolf Hitler is going to say, when he's raised out of the grave. So beloved brethren, go ahead boo boo. The Lord Jesus Christ. So again, our desire and our goal is to get each and every one of, not just y'all, but us as well, to praise the glorified Lord Jesus Christ. So that we can have life and we can have it more abundantly. Without further ado, beloved brethren, and once again, I do apologize for that mishap. If I may be allowed to say something strange, I'll say it. I'm glad that it happened, because it gave our brother, brother Linden, and I know that y'all praying right alongside with him in y'all's hearts. It gave us the opportunity to pray over these ones who did such a thing. Because it wasn't a machine or a computer hacking it, no, we're not in the days of Terminator. To human, awesome humans that was doing this. Some persons who are lost, some persons who need the Lord Jesus Christ. And tonight, they were prayed over and prayed over into the hands of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit, so that they can have their souls saved. Brother Linden was sharing with me a clip from a brother earlier this week. And then the clip, the brother was saying, that persons like what happened tonight should be handed over to Satan, so that they can have troubles, heartaches, sorrows, they very well might be caught by the FCC. It'd be fined, or even put to jail, or sent to jail for this hacking purposes. Beloved brethren, if that's the case, and if it's going to lead them to the Lord Jesus Christ, then blessed be the name of the Lord, our God. Beloved brethren, Numbers chapter 14, it's reviewed. The people rebelled, the people rebelled. And that's found in verses 1 through 12. And once again, I'm going to run through 14 and 15 very quick. I'm going to jog through 16 and 17, so brother Linden can leisurely take us through 18 and 19. God with a strong arm miraculously brought the children of Israel out of Egypt. They saw how, and this is speaking of the children of Israel, how he decimated. He decimated the children, he decimated the Egyptians. But yet, the 10 faithless spies, they came back with an unfavorable discouraging report, which caused the people to cry out, saying that they wished they had died in Egypt, or better yet, they had died in the wilderness. Beloved, beloved, beloved. There's a saying, be careful what you wish for, because you just might get it. And when the children of Israel made that audacious statement of saying they wished they would die in the wilderness? Listen to God's response into that in verse 32 of Numbers chapter 14. But as for you, your carcasses, they shall fall in this wilderness. So again, beloved, please, you know, when I was in high school, there was this young lady. And she said, I didn't ask to be born. And I said, well, aren't you glad you're alive? I can't remember what her response was after that. I really can't remember what the response was. But whether she lived past the age of 18, or maybe made it to 32, or even if she dies at 100. She shouldn't make such a statement. Because she's alive, she had better take advantage of the days that she are living, and she better give glory and thanks unto God. Because none of us, none of us asked to be born. Only the Lord Jesus Christ asked to come to this earth to save you and me. So that was a rather foolish statement for her to make, I didn't ask to be born. Because none of us didn't ask to be born. Now, in my life personally, I've had some tornadoes, some hurricanes, some tsunamis. But also, I had some sunny days, I had some alcapoca weather. I've had some days that was, that would make Hawaii jealous. In other words, I've had good days and I've had bad days. But I'm glad that I was born, because this has given me the opportunity to serve the Lord Jesus Christ, to serve him with you brothers and sisters right now. And then in eternity, we will serve, worship, and enjoy the Lord Jesus Christ forevermore with a joy that has never been experienced ever. So again, beloved, be careful what you ask for, because God will give it to you. God will give it to you. He gave it to these rebellious Israelites. None of them that rebelled against him, neither those 10 spies made it out of the wilderness. Now again, remember, we compare the wilderness to the world. So if you die in the world as a sinful one, you'll be eternally lost. Remember beloved, we are strangers, we are pilgrims, we are foreigners in this present life. This is not our home. Beloved, the children of Israel made a statement that Moses took them out of the land they called flowing with milk and honey, that's what they called Egypt. Took them out of their pleasant vineyards, and they had leeks and onions and garlics. But they weren't wise enough to make, to not make the statement that that was theirs. Because in Egypt, nothing belonged to them. Maybe the clothes on their back, but that was about it. Beloved brethren, you and I, in this world, please. You may own a beautiful home in. Let's put, let's put something reasonable. You may own a beautiful home, and let's say, okay, where I live in Far Rockaway, there's an area in where I live, some very beautiful homes. So let's just say you own a beautiful home over there, and you drive a very lovely car, and you work at a very upstanding job. Let's say that you don't own one drop. Yes, I do, brother Scott, my name's on it, yeah, yeah, yeah. But you don't own it. How can you even say such a statement, brother Scott? Because when you die, it's not going with you in the grave. All that Queen Elizabeth owned during. A market in England, when she died, none of that castle that she was living with them, please tell me that they buried that castle and her in the ground? Because if you're gonna tell me that, then I'm gonna ask you to, let's take a trip over there and see if the castle that Queen Elizabeth was living in, is this still on top side of the earth? Or is it buried in the ground with her? You gotta understand that she went to that grave with just a fine set of clothing, and that was about it. So beloved brethren, we are strangers in this world. Now, please don't get discouraged. Man, brother Scott, after tonight's study. I don't even wanna own anything, you discourage the living daylights out of me, no, 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 no. If you own a lovely home, cars, 401K stocks and bonds, enjoy them. Bless God for allowing you to have them. But please don't put all of your eggs in this basket. As a matter of fact, don't put any of your eggs in this basket. Bless what God has allowed you to own, treasure it, honor it, take care of it. If you got a lovely home, don't let it go to pieces. Enjoy it, mop it, clean it, keep everything up to snuff. But don't set your heart or your affections on these things. Because it's not going to go with you in the next life. Scripture says in Matthew. When the judgment or the tribulation come, he that is on the rooftop, do not let him go down into his house and take anything out, because you're not going to take it with you. So please beloved ones, bless God with the things that you own. But understand that this is all temporal. The only thing that's going to be permanent and that will carry over into the next life is your faithful and fruitful and fine relationship with the Lord Jesus Christ. Now the children of Israel, you know, people, they say, I'm a black Israelite, or I'm a black Jew. They say that because they think that. Above all peoples on the face of this earth, and that they are God's chosen people. Now they are God's chosen people, please don't get it misunderstood. But beloved, Exodus, Numbers, is showing us what God did with his people. God said in Exodus, when he told Moses to tell Pharaoh, let my son go. He called Israel as a whole his son. But God had to lay it on the children of Israel, as we see here in Numbers chapter 14. We'll see it in 15, we'll see it in 16. God had to lay it on them. Now God didn't spank the children of Israel, and they were his children. He didn't spank them, he destroyed them. Moses, on several different occasions, had to go in between God and the children of Israel to stay God's wrath against them. God in chapter, Numbers chapter 16, swallowed up 250 plus, that is Dayton and his rebellious ones, in the very first ever recorded earthquake. In Numbers chapter 10. God had to send fire, I'm sorry, Leviticus chapter 10, please forgive me. In Leviticus chapter 10, God had to destroy two of his own. That was, that was two of Aaron's sons. Them for offering fire in the temple. Coming back to Numbers, God had to kill a total number of 14,000 plus. Now they said on the day of September 11. They said on the day of September 11, there was some 3,000. Maybe there's a problem. There was some 3,000 destroyed on September 11. Between New York, the Pentagon, and what happened in Pennsylvania. They said it was a total number of some 3,000 people. Here, in the book of Numbers, God had to destroy nearly five times that amount. And this was his people. Remember, everything that we're reading concerning the children of Israel in the wilderness, these are God's people. God brought them out of Egypt, out of the oppressive hand of Pharaoh. They rebelled, they cut up, they acted like spoiled brats. And God had to destroy 14,000 plus of them. Beloved, please be careful when you say, y'all wish I was a Jew, or I'm a black Israelite. Because there's a responsibility that was attached to being an Israelite. They were responsible for handling the oracles of God, just so. Take for example, Numbers chapter 15, on the Sabbath. Now there are those, we have today, and they're the Seventh Day Adventists, and I'm not picking on anyone. But there are those today, who, again, the Seventh Day Adventists, says that you must observe the Sabbath, and so on and so forth. But let me tell you something, they're not observing the Sabbath as it was supposed to be observed in the day of Noah. Yeah, they go to church on Saturday, but there was a pastor who said, how do we know that their Sabbath, that the children of Israel Sabbath, was on a Saturday or on a Sunday? That's still yet to be. I can't find the right term, was still yet to be figured out. But in Numbers chapter 15, if you broke the Sabbath, for starters, you was put into prison. Numbers chapter 15 helps us to appreciate, listen to these words. Numbers chapter 15, verses 30, starting at verse 30 of verse 32. And while the children of Israel were in the wilderness, they found a man that gathered sticks upon the Sabbath day. Verse 33, and they, and they that found him gathering sticks, brought him unto Moses and Aaron and unto all the congregation, and they put him in ward, ward was jail, because it was not yet declared, declared what should be done unto him. Okay, so those that broke the Sabbath, for starters, they were put into jail. Listen to what God said the end of that man would be. Verse 36, I'm sorry, verse 35. And the Lord said unto Moses, the man shall surely be put to death. All the congregation shall stone him with stones without the camp. And all the congregation brought him outside the camp and stoned him with stones, that he died, as God commanded Moses. We just came out of the book of Leviticus, and Leviticus went into some severe details, or serious details concerning the full scope of the Sabbath. There was a Sabbath that had to go to the land as well. You had to give the land a rest after a certain amount of time. On the Seventh Day Adventist practicing that, I doubt it. Because do they own, let's just say, if they live in Queens, do they own the whole of Queens? Or Brooklyn, or Manhattan, or Staten Island, or wherever they live? They may own the property. Now, are they gonna give their property that rest at the end of that Sabbath term? Because it was, it was a Sabbath of seven years, which meant 49 years. So again, beloved, please, let's, let's, let's be careful as to our practices, as to our beliefs, and as to things that God does not approve of. Again, falling back to Numbers chapter 14. There were those who rebelled against. Then listen to what they say concerning going into the promised land, not at God's instructions, but at their own volition. Verse forty of Numbers, chapter fourteen. And they rose up early in the morning and got them up into the top of the mountain saying, lo, we're here. And we will go into the place which the Lord hath promised, for we have sinned. Reason, you transgressed the, the, the commandment of the Lord, but it will not prosper. Do not go up, for the Lord is not with you. You will be smitten by your enemies. I told you, beloved, before, that there was this young lady that said this, and I'm quoting her. At the day of judgment, and I pray that I'm being, I'm not being blasphemous as I speak this. And if I am, may God forgive me and help me to mine my tongue in the future. My daughter's saying, don't say it. From the mouth of a babe. Okay, if she's, since she's advising me, I'll do just that. I won't say it. But she was saying that persons, if they die in their sins, should be allowed to get into heaven anyway. Okay, this is what the children of Israel saying in Numbers, chapter fourteen, verse forty. They're clearly saying, we have sinned, when Moses warned them, don't do it, because God is not with you. Okay, listen to verse forty-five. Then their Malachites, these are their enemies, came down, and the Canaanites dwelt in the hill and smote them and discomforted them even unto Hormuz. So what happened to these presumptuous ones that felt that they could sin and still get into God's presence and to his, into God's promised land? They were killed. Beloved, please, please, people are trying to take advantage of John, chapter three sixteen. Well, don't the Bible say, God so loved the world? Yes, he does. But don't stop at John three sixteen. And even if you're gonna stop at John three sixteen, let's just see what kind of traffic light is found in John three sixteen. For God so loved the world that he gave his only begotten son, that whosoever believes in him should not perish. So, how do you keep from perishing? You gotta believe in him. And if you believe in him, will you be living and practicing sin? No. John, chapter five, our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ, found a man that he just healed in a temple, and he said to him, you are healed. What? Go and sin no more unless a worse thing will happen unto you. Beloved, please, 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 get out of your thinking, this foolishness that's coming from the world. Again, those ten faithless spies are examples of the world. Please get out of your mind the foolish thinking that, yeah, we can sin, we can have sex, do drugs, and listen to rock and roll, and die in that state, and still have God's favor. It won't. It won't. It won't. Those men that flew those airplanes into the World Trade Center, they were Muslims. And Muslims don't believe on the Lord Jesus Christ as the Son of God. They crashed those airplanes into the World Trade Center. They died in their sins. Now, they're told by their religious groups or their religious peers that if you do this, it's called um mercy killing, something to that effect. I'm, I'm really not sure of the exact term. But they're told that if they do that, that when they get to heaven, they'll have ten, when they get to heaven. First of all, they ain't going to heaven. And then they'll be told that they'll get ten virgins. See, again, you see how practical the book of Numbers is? Again, Numbers, chapter fourteen, verse forty says, let us still go into heaven. I'm paraphrasing. But we have sinned. It don't work like that. It don't work like that. Do not think that you can commit a sin, you can die in that sin, and you'll have God's favor. Years ago, there was uh these two bank robbers, and they were involved in a shootout with the police, with the FBI. And one of them got killed on the spot. Now, he died in his sins. What was his sin? He was a thief. Okay, remember, scripture says thieves will not inherit the kingdom of God. Years ago, there was these two homosexuals living together as lovers. A fire broke out in their apartment. One of them died. He perished in the fire. Surely, you do not think that God is going to raise him up from the dead and tell him to come into his kingdom. Again, listen to the practicality of Numbers, chapter fourteen, verse forty. We will go up to the mountain as God has promised, though we have sinned. Please, eliminate from your thinking that you can sin, you could die in your sins, and that you'll have God's favor. It won't work. Moving to Numbers, chapter fifteen. God allows, I'm sorry, God is telling the children of Israel that when they do inherit the land, that they are to offer sacrifices and burnt offerings. Now, again, this points to our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ. And that speaks to you and I. Beloved, wherever we may go, let's just say we live in Queens. And we move to the Bronx, or we move to Staten Island, or we move to New Jersey, or Connecticut, or New Hampshire, or Montana, or Long Isla, or, or Rhode Island. When we inhabit these new places, we are to take the Lord Jesus Christ with us. And we're to be worshippers and servants of his. And we are to do what he commands us in these new places of habitation. Now, the oil that's mentioned here in Numbers, chapter fifteen, the oils beautifully and perfectly speaks of the Holy Spirit. The wine that they are part, that they are, that they are to partake of, that speaks of joy. So again, beloved brethren, these are the things that we are to do as we move throughout this world. Now, really quick, the burnt offering was a completely consumed offering that has nothing left but ashes. In doing this, you are symbolically offering your life to God. When a burnt offering was given from a sincere heart, it meant that the offerer's life was totally and completely belongs to God and loyal love, because God delivered us from sin and from death. Beloved, right now, right where you are, do you know that you can offer up a burnt offering? You can say silently in your heart, Lord Jesus, please come into my life and be my savior. You see the beauty of being under grace? That wherever you are, whether you're in a crowded train, or on a bus, or at a restaurant, or in the confines of your home, or at school, work, restaurant, plate, you can surrender yourself to the Lord Jesus Christ totally and completely. Beloved, embrace, bless, and glorify God, that he is us under the new covenant of grace, which is found in his son, our Lord, our Savior, Jesus, our Christ. Beloved, we touched upon the penalty of having broken the Sabbath. Again, you wanna live, oh, okay, let me stop right there. The Sabbath is still being honored, carried on, and celebrated to date. Way, Brother Scott, way, way, you just said we're no longer under the Sabbath. Now make up your mind. Either we're under the Sabbath, or we're not. Both. We're not under the mosaic Sabbath and its restrictions and its penalties. We're under Jesus's Sabbath. Now remember, Sabbath day, you were supposed to rest from your works. When our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ was on the cross and he said, it is finished, we are now resting in his Sabbath. We're resting in his work of salvation. And yes, and yes. Like the penalty was death for breaking the Sabbath in Moses's day, the penalty is death today if we break Jesus's Sabbath. Remember, the Sabbath was a rest from your works. The Sabbath that we're living in under our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ, we're living in, we're living under his works of salvation. And if you don't believe in Jesus Christ as your Lord and Savior, you are breaking his Sabbath. And the penalty is what again? What is that penalty? John, chapter three, verse eighteen. He that believeeth upon Jesus is not condemned, but he that doesn't believe is condemned already, because he does not believe in the name of the only begotten son of God. Beloved, again, read your Bible. Get into the scriptures. Listen to God speak to you through his word. Listen to God speak to you through one of his faithful men. Listen to God talk to you, that he may bring you into his glorious kingdom. Still within the confines of Numbers, chapter fifteen, sins of ignorance. If any soul, verse twenty-seven, sin through ignorance, he shall bring a goat of the first year for a sin offering. Beloved brethren, again, please understand that this sin offering, that God has made allowance for the what, um, how can I say it? Sins of ignorance? God made allowance for it then. But listen to Acts, chapter seventeen, verse thirty of what we're living on, or what we're living under today, concerning sins of ignorance. Acts, chapter seventeen, verse thirty reads as follows. And at times of this ignorance, God winked at, but now commands all men everywhere to repent. Beloved, if you sin ignorantly, now, let, let me, again, let me use myself as an example. I've known right from wrong ever since I was a five-year-old child, that I know the, 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 um, the depth and the breadth of right and wrong. No, but I knew that taking stuff without asking was wrong. I didn't know anything about uh sex and fornication and all that, because I didn't even know what that really was. But I, I had an idea, again, of right and wrong. So I'm claiming to have sinned ignorantly, and what I mean by ignorantly is not under the ignorance of not knowing. I knew better. But as I look back, I said, God, how in the world could I have been so stupid? So godless, so dumb, such an abomination to you, Father. I was ignorant, and you wanna talk about, I was ignorant with a PhD. Forget the masters or the doctorate. I had a PhD in ignorance, because I ignorantly sinned against my heavenly Father. I now know better. I now do better. I do live better. But beloved, please understand this, that even in my state of being ignorant, God, from time to time, brought to me a message of, don't do it. Now, if I refused his message, I would have been destroyed. So again, beloved, God makes provisions for sinning in ignorance. But that provision is, you have to acknowledge that you've done wrong, and you have to repent. Then there was a difference of those who sinned deliberately. Verse thirty, but the soul that doeth aught presumptuously, whether he be born in a land or a stranger, the same reproaches the Lord, that soul shall be cut off from among his people. Because, verse thirty-one, he despises the word of the Lord and hath broken his commandment, that soul shall utterly be cut off. His iniquity shall be upon him. David prayed to God, Lord, keep me from presumptuous sins. That's the sin that is being mentioned of here in Numbers, chapter fifteen, verse thirty. Beloved, I know better. I will not sin like I used to sin. Again, listen to the beautiful passage found in Acts, chapter third, uh, Acts, chapter seventeen, verse thirty. At times of this ignorance, God, he overlooked it. But he's commanding all men everywhere to repent. Now, what does that say? That say, all have sinned and come short of the glory of God. So every man, every woman, everywhere, has to repent. Whether they're sinning from ignorance or sinning from deliberate. Now, Brother Scott, you just read that if a person sins presumptuously, that he's going to be cut off. Yes, I did. Again, that was under the mosaic law or mosaic covenant. But listen to what first John, chapter two, says in connection to that, for those of us who actually go out there with the full knowledge and we sin. Listen to first John, chapter two, I'm sorry, yes, first John, chapter two, verses one and two. My little children, now, this is speaking to a Christian. This is speaking to one who knows not to go out there and commit sex, drugs, and rock and roll. My little children, these things I write unto you, that you do not sin. But if any man sinned, we have an advocate with the Father, Jesus Christ, the righteous. For he is the propitiation of our sins, and not for ours only, but also for the sins of the whole world. So, if you do go out there and you do sin presumptuously, ah, ah, I'm sick of doing what's right. I'm, I'm, I'm tired of, of, of walking the way of right. My, 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 my wife and children, they make me sick. I'm, I'm going out here, and I'm gonna find me a, 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 a girl, and we're just gonna have ourselves a good time. That's sinning presumptuously. Now, don't forget, Luke, we just came out of the beautiful book of Luke. And there was one that did sin presumptuously, that was the prodigal son. Now, we come to our senses like the prodigal son. And we say, Father, I have sinned against thee, and I'm no longer worthy to be called your son. God will cleanse you and forgive you of your sins. My daughter has a question. Go ahead, baby, nice and loud.
What? Like, what if you say a cuss word in your head, does it still count as a sin?
Okay, my daughter said, what if you say a curse in your head, that that still counts as a sin? Again, this is why a full study of the Bible is so beautiful. Did we not read that our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ knows the thoughts of persons? The scripture says that God is a discerner of the thoughts and intentions of the heart. So, though I can't read my daughter's mind of what she may be thinking, but if she should say a cuss word in her mind, who is reading her mind in our heart? The Father. And not just my daughter, but, but any of us. We may say, we sitting right in front of a person and cussing them to a double finish and smiling while we're doing it in our mind. But God sees it, hears it, and knows all about it. So is it a sin? The answer to that is yes. Remember, scripture says, if a man looks, he didn't say touch. If a man looks upon a woman and lusts after her, he's committed adultery with her in his heart already. Now, remember, John, chapter eight, we have the actual act of adultery exposed. Remember, those men that brought that beautiful sister, and the reason why I call her a beautiful sister is because Jesus didn't condemn her, so she's all right in my book. They brought her to Jesus, she was still practically naked, not practically. The reason why I say practically, because she just probably had a sheet wrapped, uh, wrapped around her. But the scripture says that she was caught in the very act, so she wasn't fully clothed. So she was naked. So she probably just had a sheet wrapped around her. That was adultery. The physical, physical act of adultery. If a man looks across a crowded room at a woman, he's fully clothed, she's fully clothed. And he says in his mind, man, I would like to get a piece of that candy. In God's sight, he's committed adultery already. My daughter was saying, what is the adultery? Well, in the case of me being a married man, if I step outside of my marriage relations and see another woman, that's adultery. And in the case of what our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ is saying, that you have a lust or a desire or a passion with someone so that it, 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 it permeates your heart and your soul, and that you committed adultery with her in your mind, because the, the, the passion of it is so great that um, it's, it's like, well, it's, it's, it's the same thing, but not actually physical. The same thing, but not actually physical. Understand? Understand? Okay, thank you for that beautiful question. Moving on beloved to sixteen and seventeen. In sixteen and seventeen, again, we have the first recorded earthquake. Uh, these rebellious ones, and I just want to uh just touch that really quick. And Moses saying in verse twenty nine, starting at verse twenty nine of twenty eight, Romans chapter sixteen. And Moses says, hereby shall you know that the Lord has sent me to do all these works, but I have not done them of my own mind. Now let's just get a quick backdrop of that. When God was first calling Moses in Exodus chapter three, Moses didn't even want to do it. Moses did not want to do it and that angered the Lord. So for these men to come along in Numbers chapter sixteen and say, Moses, you took this upon yourself to be our leader, to be our prince, they're liars. Because Moses didn't even want to do it. Moses was called by God to set God's people free from the, uh, the snares of Pharaoh. So when these persons are rebelling against Moses, they're not rebelling against Moses per se. God says to Jer- to Jeremiah, do not be afraid of their faces. Because it is not against you that they're doing this evil, it is against me. So they're going against God's choice and calling for Moses. Remember Moses was the meakest man on earth. Mar- uh Moses had a heart like David for God. So when again, these rebellious men, they were going against God's choice. This is the twenty eight of Numbers chapter sixteen. And Moses said, hereby shall you know that the Lord has sent me to do these works, but I have not done them of my own mind. If these men died the common death of all men, or if they be visited after the visitation of all men, then the Lord didn't send me. But if the Lord makes a new thing and the earth opened her mouth and swallowed them up with all that appertainer to them, and they go down quicker to the pit. Then you shall understand that these men have provoked the Lord. Again, this is the first recorded earthquake in the history of man. And what was this for? This would be for, this was for these men rebelling against God's choice. I guess they didn't get enough of a lesson when Aaron and Miriam. Were trying to go against Moses and Miriam was struck with leprosy and she had to wait outside the camp for um, seven days. Everyone in the camp knew why Mir- why Miriam had leprosy. Everyone knew that she caught leprosy because she was going against God's choice for Moses leading the children of Israel. Again, beloved, again. The children of Israel, they didn't have a picnic with God, not because God wasn't fair to them. It was because they were unfaithful to God. And moving on to seventeen. And this will be my concluding thought, again, they just don't stop. They just, they just don't, they don't have, the children of Israel didn't have a turn off switch. They did not have a turn off switch. Here in chapter seventeen, they're still questioning. As to Moses and Aaron being God's choice. Alright, God tells Moses, alright, tell each man, oh, and get a stick. Now again, um, beloved, when I was growing up in Brooklyn, boy, those were my glory days. We used to go in the backyard and we had um, um, broken off sticks and branches and all this other stuff. So. What God was telling Moses was the follow, to tell each one to go and get a branch, to go and get a stick. As they did. As they did, they brought in these dead sticks and branches. Now, God told them to all write their names on each one and it was twelve. And Aaron wrote his name on one of these uh twelve um uprooted rods. And Moses said, the one that is chosen by God will blossom. And what do we have? Now again, these are twelve rods that stayed in the tabernacle overnight. And listen to. Verse. Eight of Numbers chapter seventeen. And it came to pass that on the morrow, Moses went unto the tabernacle witness and behold, the rod of Aaron for the house of Levi. Was budded and brought forth buds and blossomed blossoms and yielded almonds. Beloved, that is the most vivid picture of our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ. That could possibly be found in the Old Testament. When our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ was raised the third day from the dead. Not only did he get a new glorified life. But he produced fruit. And beloved, his fruit is still being produced. October twelfth, twenty twenty four. And that fruit is you and I. So again, beloved. When God makes the call, God makes the call. Now, yes, today. New Testament tells us to try the spirits to see whether they be from God or from some other source. So in a sense, please understand what I'm saying. In a sense, I am glad that the children of Israel did put. This test to Moses and Aaron. Because this test, this proof, this evidence has stood the test of time for us down to the twenty first century. Of showing that God chose Jesus, not Mohammed, not Buddha. Not Confucius, not Sensei, whoever else is out there. Not them, because we are all these men that I just aforementioned, they're all still in their graves dead. They've actually descended into dust. No fruit from them whatsoever. But Aaron's, but, but. Gee, no, let me say that Aaron's rod, like our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ. Produced blossoms, produced fruit, and we are the fruit. Of the resurrected Lord Jesus Christ. Brother Linden.
Very well. Explains. I want y'all to understand. That before sin and death entered the world. Adam and Eve. Were at rest. They were. In the glorified presence of our Lord. They walked with him in the garden. And as discussed earlier about the Sabbath, we're returning to our rest. If you look at it, seven means complete. Mark of Man is six, we fell short. The only one who completes us. Is Jesus. Empires have risen and fallen. Dynasties. Have risen and fallen. There's only one true reality, that's the truth. He's the only one that could give us rest. He's the only one that completes us. All the other religions. Declare that we have to earn our way. By works and Brother Scott is, is correct. No matter what we do, the works of the law will keep us under the curse. And people tend to forget. That in doing Jesus's ministry, they were still under the law until the cross. His parents sacrificed uh, a dove. And I think it's two doves, but the fact of the matter is that they were still respecting. The mosaic law because the firstborn son is to be presented uh. To the priests with doves and Jesus would say, listen, I healed you, go present yourself to the priest. And you know, we, we went over the book of Leviticus and if somebody had some sores and. And if they were cleansed or they were healed, they can present themselves to the priest. And um. I, I, I want, I want to read that. To you so you, you can have a clear understanding. I know we review this, but for anybody who was not in the journey. Um, I think it's more almost a year ago. Who was not in the journey with us, I would like to enlighten you again. We'll go to uh Numbers chapter eighteen and nineteen. And uh, we, we, we'll see that everything from first fruits to um wine. Which is also joy, but it's also symbol, um, it symbolizes the blood because you know when Jesus was at. The Passover meal with his uh disciples before his arrest. This bread and take this wine, this is my bread, my body that's broken for you and this is my blood. New covenant. So we see that bread, wine and oil, it all points to God. It's the Holy Spirit, bread is the, the body, the life, eternal life, and blood is the, the lamb. This spirit me is I. Uh, get there. And uh, I, I, I want. You to know that uh. I believe it's in um. It could be in Luke. Brother Scott, I, I can't recall, um, it was uh Brother Simon who presented Jesus. They presented um, and he was uh, he saw Jesus. And he, and he was blessed to see Jesus before he died. I can find that. And uh, we can go on from there. Just give me one moment. Spirit me one moment, I'll find it. And this also showed that they were poor too. You know, they didn't have uh. They didn't have that uh, the means to get. Uh, uh, an oxen or. A lamb. So just give me one moment and I'll get there. And uh, we can, we can definitely, okay. Let, let's go to Luke chapter two verse twenty two. And uh. It's written. And you know, if you do have the time, do your homework, um, you can go to Leviticus and you can see that some of the um. If you were too poor, this is what you had to get to present uh, your first child. So um. Let's go to Luke chapter two. And it is written. When the time came for the purification. By the law of Moses, Joseph and Mary took him to Jerusalem to present him to the Lord. As it is written in the law of the Lord, every firstborn male is to be consecrated to the Lord. Now, when you hear these words, oh, that sounds too biblical, too uh fancy for me. It just means set apart. You are chosen to be um, brought to the Lord. You are set apart from the world. Now you're in one-on-one relationship with God. And to offer a sacrifice in keeping with what is said in the law of the Lord. A pair of doves or two young pigeons. This shows that they were very poor and if I, I'm not going to dive into Leviticus, but yes, again, if you're too poor. And you want to present your first child and you want to consecrate them, consecrate them to the priesthood, you need doves or two pigeons. So again, Jesus's ministry. During the duration of his ministry shows. That Israelites were under the law. It was mandated for them to do this. Do we have to present our child with doves today? We got the real deal. Don't fall for all these shadows and, and signs and symbols. And that's why Jesus said, you know, you adulterous generation, you seek after a sign. Now, we don't have to look at these signs. To get reassurance, we go by faith and we know that. Salvation, the promise of eternal life, the promise of entering this rest is based. On faith, not the law. The law's duty was to point us to our Savior. If the law was a mirror to convict us, to show us that we have a fallen condition. And the priest who examines us is the one and only Jesus Christ. And when he examines us, he heals us, he binds up our wounds, he restores us, he gives us wedding clothes. We are now given his spirit. And then to complete it all, we will receive resurrected bodies. These bodies that we live in, these temples, these uh, these dwellings that we live in, these tents are temporary. It's just like Pinocchio, I want to be a real boy. Where do you think they get that concept from? It's, it's what we're going through. We, we want to have that um glorified resurrected body. Just like Jesus and we'll see him for who he is and we'll be like him. Alright, I know we took a little detour. Let's go to Numbers chapter eighteen. And uh. I'm just gonna put on some uh. Get prepared and put these glasses on. Now, we realize that Korah and all the rebels. They were consecrated. To assist the priests. Levites assisted in the services of the priests. They had significant positions. And now. This. Now, since they have been, they, they've been perished, the earth swallowed them up. They're replacements. So now Aaron has to. At the replacement Levites. And let them know what their duties are. So the Lord said to Aaron. You, your sons and your family are to bear the responsibility for offenses connected with the sanctuary. And you and your sons alone are to bear the responsibility. For offenses connected with the priest. Bring your fellow Levites from your ancestral tribe to join you and assist you when you and your sons minister before the tent of the. Law. They are to be responsible unto you and are to perform all the duties of the tents. But they must not go near the furnishings of the sanctuary or the altar. Otherwise, both they and you will die. This is similar to. I know still to this day, I'm like, wow, that's, that's serious. Don't come near the furnishings. Um. Even when uh, Azza, a friend of David. Was being sincere about it and Oxen that was carrying the ark, only the Levites can carry the ark. And he saw that the ox was stumbling. And he put it back and he put, he helped put the ark. Back in place, but I'm gonna read to you, second Samuel chapter six, verses six through seven. It is written. When they came to the threshing naked. Azza reached out and took hold of the ark of God because the ox stumbled. The Lord's anger burned against Azza because of his, of um, of. Um of reverence, irreverent, not so, he was not shown reverence in God's eyes. Irreverent act, therefore God struck him down and he died there beside the ark of God. I know that um in this society, we go by opinions, we go by our own logic and reasoning. We try to explain out of obedience. But in this walk, it really boils down to obedience, uh you could do many deeds. If you don't have that obedient spirit within you, it's meaningless, and I know we discussed this. I think it's in Second Kings chapter thirteen, we went over it about this man of God. He approached a king and uh he was uh, he corrupted the people. Worshiping false idols. And God told him specifically, don't go the way you came in and do not eat with anybody. And that uh man of God believed a lie, this person was so intrigued by this miracle he did. When the uh king wanted to seize him and pointed in this direction, you know, the man of God. Uh by the power of the Holy Spirit, his hand became with it, but he healed that king's hand. And restored, and the king wanted to eat with him and reward him, but he said, no, I'm commanded not to eat with anybody, and I must go. So then now somebody lied and said, hey, I'm a prophet too, and God said this, you should eat with me, it's okay. So we need to really, really understand the beauty of this day. Grace, I have fallen many times, I have disobeyed many times, so to think. Wow, if it was left to me, I'd be doomed, all this would. So, let's not rely on the works of the law, let's not try to uh earn God's love. That's what grace is all about. And we should be humbled, and yes, of course, we should seek obedience. With by faith, not by our own efforts. Alright, so let's read further. They are to join you and be responsible for the care of the tented meeting. All the work of the tent, and no one else may come near where you are. You ought to be responsible for the care of the sanctuary and the altar, so that my wrath will not fall on the Israelites again. I myself have selected your fellow Levites from among the Israelites as a gift to you. Dedicated to the Lord to do the work at the tented meeting. Where only you and your sons may serve as priests in connection with everything at the altar and inside the curtain. I am giving you the service of the priesthood as a gift. Anyone else who comes near the sanctuary is to be put to death. Well, you remember when and when God had Moses hide in the cleft of the rock? We are in Christ, he is the rock, we are hidden in Christ. So now when we're hidden in Christ, when we're born again, we can see God face to face and not die. Cause sin. Is destructive and it cannot be in the presence of God. I wanna read um, I believe it's in Second Corinthians. And it talks about this curtain, okay, so nobody was supposed to be in. The curtain with leave um with Aaron and the priests. But here's the beauty of the New Testament, that's why we worship the Lord Jesus, he's the high priest, he's the advocate, he's the mediator, he's an intercessor. He's the one that has. Torn down that curtain, so that we too can have intimate fellowship with the Father. And with our glorified bodies, now we can, you know, God is longing to unveil us, so he can receive. His bride. His new building, his new field. So I'm going to, if you can, I I I didn't include this in the notes, but uh I think it's good to read this. I'm gonna start from verse twelve in chapter three, Second Corinthians. I know I'm probably at a fast pace, again, I'll always like to um reiterate, we have. Um YouTube Bible study, you can check um my channel, Brother Scott can send you the link. And if you wanna review on your own time, at your own pace, yes, we have that there, and I also text the verses. To Scott, and he shares it, he shares with the rest of you. So it is written, therefore, since we have such a hope. We are very bold, and we're not like Moses, who would put a veil over his face to prevent. The Israelites from seeing the end of what was passing away, where their minds were made dull. For to this day, the same veil remains when the old covenant is read. It has been not been removed, because only in Christ is it taken away. Even to this day, when Moses is read, a veil covers their hearts. But whenever anyone turns to the Lord, the veil is taken away. Now the Lord is the spirit, and where the spirit of the Lord is, there is freedom. And so then now we're here, we can make the connections, the Holy Spirit will say, listen, Jesus is our resting place. Jesus says in Matthew chapter eleven verse twenty-eight through twenty-nine, come to me and I will give you rest, my yoke is easy. When you're in my presence, you're complete, there's shalom, there's peace. You're not frantic, you're not burning, you know that you're well secure in my presence, and that's what we long for. We're naked without God. We are in destruction when we're incomplete. We're doomed for failure, no matter how you may slice it or try to explain. All the medicine in the world, all the technology that we have advanced in, can never ever complete us. You need Jesus to remove that curtain, we also see that in Hebrews. I believe Hebrews chapter six. Okay, and here, we read again. About this curtain. No man can have intimacy with God because of our sins. We have an advocate, a high priest, not only does he remove the veil and say that, hey, we are renewed. All the tradition of marriage, you know, the woman comes with a veil and and the husband, um now says, hey, you may kiss the bride. He he removes a veil from her. Well, it's the same thing, and now we we're reborn, God is ready to unveil us. A new creation, and he's, he is to taken by, he's taken back by our beauty, read the Song of Songs. Okay, well, let's go to Hebrews chapter six, verse eighteen to the end of the chapter. God did this so that by two unchangeable things in which is it is impossible for God to lie. We who have fled to take hold of the hope set before us may be greatly encouraged. We have this hope as an anchor for the soul firm and secure. In a sanctuary behind the curtain. Where. Our foreign, Jesus has entered on our behalf. He has become a high priest forever in the order of Melchizedek, so now we know. We know that we can be in a glorified presence. And we're in a glorified presence of God, we have intimacy with him because of Yahshua, Hamashiach. He's the one that made it possible. So now when we see these regulations in the Old Testament, we see how we are bound. We are banished from God's presence, and if we're not connected in God's presence, we are gonna wither away like an old branch. But Jesus says in so many ways, in Sidon chapter fifteen, I'm the vine and you're the branches, without me you cannot bear fruit. Anyone who's not producing fruit will be cut off and thrown into the fire. We need to stay connected to God through prayer, through worship, through fellowship. And it's not a strain to us, we know that he's our living water. The unbroken system of water, he's the only one that can satisfy us. He's the only one that can bring us, give us this life himself, he gives himself more abundantly. So now we have this rock, when we trust in him, he's our shelter, we can cry out to him, pour out your hearts, you people. For God is our refuge, he's our hope, he's a forerunner that removes the curtain that divided us. That separated us us from God. So, when you just read the Old Testament, and you see the observances, and you see all the the festivals and new moons, Sabbaths. These were all pointed dates pointing to the ultimate priest, Yahshua. He died on Passover. Passover lamb, now is the lamb that they slew in Egypt and put the blood of that. Slaying lamb on the the doorpost, is is that the, is that Jesus? No, that's a shadow, that's a a sign. Do we need to go and 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 slew a lamb and and say, oh, please, God, pass me over? Keep me away from death, we don't have to because we, Jesus did it all. Stop chasing shadows. Please stop. Enjoy your freedom in the presence of God. Okay. Then the Lord said to Aaron, I myself have put you in ch- charge of. The offerings presented. All the holy offerings that Israelites give me, I give to you, and your son portion. Your perpetual share, you ought to have the part, you you are to have the part. Of the most holy offerings that is kept from the fire, from all the gifts they will bring me as my most holy offerings. Whether grain or sin or guilt offerings, that part belongs to you and your sons. Eat it as something most holy. Every male shall eat it, you must regard it. Again, this this make the connection, eat my flesh and drink my blood. When we have fellowship with God, we are, we we eat. You know, you may think, what Mason, what are you talking about, he's eating us, well, yes, we, he's our inheritance. And we are, he is an inheritance, we are, it means fellowship, you know, when you um you're courting. If a man is courting a woman or vice versa, the woman's courting a man, what's what what what's the author? You know, when they're trying to get to know each other, hey, why um why don't we just go out to eat and and have a date? Means they're getting to know one another, meal. This is just um getting to know. And we see that many times, hey, Zakias, and I I, yeah, um, maybe go to your house and have something to eat. I mean, let's have fellowship. And. When the more and more we get in tuned with the Holy Spirit, we have a deeper understanding of who. God is, and that's why we have these Bible studies, I learn a lot. Things I'd never saw before, and I know if I go over these chapters again, I'm gonna be just, I'm gonna be overwhelmed with awe. Because, wow, it's it's just ending, learning, experience. And it's not just intellectual, it's more of intimate knowledge. Now that I. Got more and more, it's not knowing about him, it's knowing that I love him and I don't wanna hurt him. He's the most powerful God, but we know that his heart is very tender. Very sensitive. And in my love, I'm learning. It's not just a matter of me, oh, being uh receiving mercy. And uh and just being cleared from my crimes. I don't wanna hurt my lover, I I I wanna get to know him more and more, and I can only do that with the help of the Holy Spirit. And that applies to all of you. This also is yours, whatever is set aside from the gifts of all the ways of the Israelites. I give this to you and your sons and daughters as your perpetual share. Everyone in the household who's clean may eat it. I give you all the finest olive oil, again, the Holy Spirit, and the finest new wine, the blood of the lamb and grain bread. They give the Lord as his first fruits of their harvests. Now. First fruits. You've heard in Malachi, is it robbery, you don't give tithes and offerings? A curse is gonna be upon you, but you know what? Um unfortunately, maybe they sincerely misinterpret the scriptures. Or maybe they're just conniving, they're just focused on feeding their selfish stomachs and slaving people. Compelling them, and and God does not want people to be compelled, he wants a cheerful giver. Does that negate from giving to the church? Of course not, because we wanna support the rescue mission of our lost brothers and sisters, whom God is looking for. With these tithes and offerings, the offering is Jesus. And the tithes of first fruits is the true believers in Jesus. And Jesus is the best of the best, he's the first fruit, so I'm gonna read some scriptures to you to show you. That these first fruits, again, is a shadow of Christ and his born again redeemed children. Let's go to twenty um Leviticus verse fifteen through seventeen. And then I'm gonna take another bridge to James chapter one verse eighteen, then Revelation is chapter fourteen verses four through five. And then again to Malachi, the infamous chapter, Malachi. Which is always quoted but misunderstood. You see, the barn is heaven, the threshing floor is God dividing the wicked from the the righteous. And bringing those to his barn, the first fruits. Twenty-three verses fifteen through seventeen. From the day Sabbath, now now see, this is, this is, open your mind now. Day after Sabbath is Sunday, and Jesus rose on the first day. Cause it says that in the Bible, the first day of the week. From the day after the Sabbath, the day you receive of the wave offering. Count off seven full weeks. Count off fifty days up to the day after the seventh Sabbath, which we know is Pentecost. And then the present, and an offering of new grain to the Lord. From wherever you live, bring to those made of two tenths of ephah and the finest flour baked with yeast. Offering of first fruits to the Lord, he like must be like, what are these first fruits about? So now, let's go to James chapter one, verse eighteen. And then we're gonna go to first Corinthians chapter fifteen, verse twenty, I'm gonna show you how you take a journey through the scriptures, so you can have a. Uh it's like a a picture developing, okay, we we got the negative, now let let's see how this picture develops. As we journey through the scriptures of the Bible. Let's go to James chapter one, verse eighteen, James chapter one, verse eighteen. It is written, I'll go a little further to verse seventeen. Every good and perfect gift is from above. Coming down from the father of the heavenly lights, who does not change like shifting shadows. He chose to give us birth through the word of truth. That we might be a kind of first fruit of all created. When you receive the word and you say, I want God, I want Jesus to be my savior, my you have become a first fruit. Why? Because Jesus is first fruit, the best of the best. As it was said, creme de la creme. Let's go to first Corinthians, chapter fifteen, verse twenty. Again, but Christ has indeed been raised from the dead. The first fruits of those who have fallen asleep. So he's our first fruit. And we're the first fruits. So think of when they took the tithes every three years from the fields. Okay, at that time. As because of Levite service, God gave them something to eat. In return for their services in the sanctuary. But when you look deep down. You realize that this is Jesus's promise of bringing the first fruits to his storehouse. And who is the storehouse? Jesus. In my Father's house, there are many mansions. In me, there are many believers. If we're not so, I wouldn't have told you. But I go prepare a place for you in me, right? So when you put the scripture together. Those who are in Christ do not stand condemned. We, we see a false shadow again with the ark. Jesus is the ark. The word is his judgment. People who are in the ark did not stand condemned. So if you're in the cleft of the rock. You're in Yesuah. You have his spirit. God will look at you. Okay, you got wedding clothes. You're clothed in my son. But if we're clothed in our filthy rags. Who, how'd you get in here? How did you get in here? So. We see that it's developing now. Let's go to Revelation, chapter fourteen, verse four through five. Revelation, chapter fourteen, verse five. It is written. I'll go early to four. These are those who did not defile themselves with women. Or they remained virgins. They filed egos. They were purchased from among mankind and offered as first fruits to God and the lamb. No law was found in their mouths. They are blameless. Now you think, oh, I, I, I fornicated. How, how's that possible? How can I be a first fruit? Well, you know, when we're born again, we, we, we can also make a, a, a tra- we can make a tie in with Isaiah. When he was commissioned, he says, hey, I'm a man with filthy lips. I'm, I'm, I'm here among the land with people with filthy lips and they brought a hot call. So yes, when we receive the encounter from Jesus. And we, we know that we received a, a gracious call from him, just like Paul. We are found blameless. We are found to be a first fruit. Now let's go to the scripture where people, um, misinterpreted. You see, God, again, when they gave offerings, they, they vowed to give a good offering with, with a, a lamb to the priests to sacrifice. But they said, no, let me just give this crippled lamb. Let me just give this blind lamb. Let me give this, uh, this lame lamb. Uh, they won't know the difference. Cause I see value in this one. I can make a lot of money off this one. So I want you to take this one. And God said, I'm a great king. That doesn't represent me. Why are you robbing me of my offerings? That does not represent me. And, and again, tithing involved in the fields. But it was a bigger, bigger picture that was painting God's salvation for us believers. We're the first fruits that were gonna be brought back to the storehouse. Let's go to Malachi, chapter three, verse ten. Okay. Okay. Bring the whole tithe into the storehouse. That there may be food in my house. Test me in this, says the Lord Almighty, and see if I will not throw open the floodgates of heaven and pour out so much blessing that there'll be, there'll not be room enough to store it. I'll, I'll prevent pests and devouring, from devouring your crops and the vines and your fields will not drop. Their fruit before it is ripe, says the Lord Almighty. And all the nations will call you blessed, for yours will be delighted, a be a delighted land, says the Lord Almighty. So when you look at this, look at the key words, bring the whole tithe, which is the first fruits to the storehouse. Now I'm gonna go to John, chapter fourteen. And I'm gonna say, uh, you, you're going to see in the first verse where Jesus says in my Father's, uh, under compression, that I'm gonna have this nice mansion with free cable and, uh, nice furniture. The mansion is you. You were in foreclosure homes with these sinful bodies of decay and now you're given a mansion. Do not let your hearts be troubled. You believe God, believe also in me. My has many mansions. If that were not so. Where I've told you that I am going there to prepare a place for you. And if I go and prepare a place for you, I will come back and take you to be with you. You may be with, where I am. So. These top, these, these fruits that they were bringing from the crops is us. This is Jesus's promise to take you back. You're gonna be in your, the sh- my sheltered presence forever and ever. I'm, I'm gonna be your shelter. I'm gonna be your sanctuary. I wasn't gonna go to this extent to show you the connections and show that these mansions, this house, we are built into spiritual house, Jesus. And, um, if you, when you go to second Corinthians, um, I believe, chapter five. Here we read. For we know that if the earthly tent we live in is destroyed. We have a building from God, meaning that we're gonna have a resurrected body from God. We have a building from God, an eternal house in heaven, not built by human hands. Meanwhile, we've grown long to be clothed instead of, instead with our heavenly dwelling. Because then we are clothed. We will not be found naked. For while we are in this tent, we grown in our burden because we do not wish to be enclosed. But to be clothed instead with our heavenly dwelling. So that what is mortal may be swallowed up by life. Now the one who's fashioned us for this very purpose is God, who has given us the spirit as a deposit guaranteeing what is to come. So now we realize that we are going to, a new building, a new body. And we're going to be in an ultimate body, Jesus Christ, who is the ultimate mansion of God. We're gonna do away with our, that's why when we read these parables and you, the guy that was in a wedding banquet. And Jesus, the, the king in the parable say, hey, how'd you get in here? How'd you get in here without any wedding clothes? How'd you come in here without a resurrected body? How, how did you come naked? See, before we're born again, our destruction is exposed. And we are filled with nakedness. We are filled with shame. We are naked without God. So you can get all the, um, the, uh, the name brand clothes and the, the Gucci and all. If you're not born again to God, you're naked and miserable. You can have all the clothes in the world, in this, this material world, but still be considered naked. You need to have a new building. You need to have a new mansion. You need to have a resurrected body. You need to be clothed in immortality. And the one who clothes us is a gift of gifts, Jesus Christ. He's a first fruit and you're born again, you're a first fruit. If he's a God, you're G, you're a God with a little G. If he's a king with a capital K, you're a king with a little K. If he's Lord, then you're a Lord with a lowercase. Get the picture now? We all who we eat, eat my flesh. I've come that they may have me more abundantly. I'll be that treasure in the house. I'm the one that circumcised you from your, your body of decay. So you can have a brand new resurrected body. I performed that surgery when I died in your place on a cross. Alright, so now we, we, we see that in these symbols are pointing to his promise. Everything in Israel that is devoted to the Lord is yours. The first offspring of every womb. Both human and animal that is offered to the Lord is yours. But you must redeem every firstborn son and every firstborn male of unclean animals. When they are a month old, you must redeem them at the redemption price set at five shekels of silver. Accountant to the sanctuary shekel, which weighs twenty, um, gurds. But you must not redeem the firstborn of a cow, a sheep or goat. They are holy. Splash their blood against the altar and burn the, their fat as a food offering and aroma pleasing to the Lord. Their meat is to be yours, just as the breast of the wave offering in the right thigh are yours. Whatever is set aside from the holy offerings that Israelites present to the Lord, I give to you and your sons and daughters as your perpetual share. Everlasting covenant of salt before the Lord. For both you, the offspring, again, salt. We, the believers, are set apart as a light and salt to the earth. So now you, you, you're getting to realize all these, these ceremonial observances. Are shadows of what is to come. In our eyes, what is the here and now. Are you being a witness? Want to make yourself an ass to your community? If you see someone doing wrong, and I'm not saying that you need to be a busybody. But are you gonna just let them, if you see somebody in a hit and run, are, are you gonna let them just sit there? You're not gonna call the police? You're gonna be so scared? You're gonna try and just mind your business? We are to be a light and salt of the world. And I'm gonna go to Matthew, chapter five, verse thirteen through sixteen. Matthew, chapter five, verse thirteen through sixteen. See, that's why they poured salt on the grain offerings. The grain offerings righteous, wheat, grain, and you know, God uses these pictures to describe the traits of the wicked and the righteous. So chaff, uh, thorns and thistles, that represents wickedness. And again, when God gave, you know, you'll see that God will say, um, the scriptures that say that we are God's building, we are God's field. You know, we're the land. He's the only one to the land, which is us. We can't, we can't find any rest. Unless we know that God has, has reconciled us, has drawn us to his son. That's when we know we are at rest. But now in the meantime. We need to be dressed and ready. And we need to keep our lamps bright. We can't just say, oh, well, I, I'll just leave that to, uh, Rabbi Snyder, Vern McGee. Yeah, let them listen to the accordance of those who are put to rest, uh. This is irresponsible. That's not my calling. I, I receive Jesus and I'll, I'll just keep him to myself and, uh, you know, I'll just live, uh, then I'll be a law-abiding citizen and I'll pay my taxes and I'll, I'll keep to myself. Mind my own business. So I can be at peace. Let's read. Matthew, chapter five, verse thirteen through sixteen. You are the salt of the earth. But if the salt loses its saltiness, how can it be made salty again? It is no longer good for anything except to be thrown out and trampled under foot. You are the light of the world. A town built on a hill cannot be hidden. Neither do people light a lamp and put it under a bowl. Instead, they put it on a stand and it gives light to everyone in the house. In the same way, let your light shine before others, that they may see your good deeds and glorify your father in heaven. When you just be yourself, you do things privately, you do things intimately, you're not trying to blow trumpets and like, oh, look what I did for this person. Look what I did, look what I did, look at me. No. People gonna see you. And it's good that you do not commend yourself with your own lips, but let somebody else commend you with their own lips. If they're gonna, um, say, hey, you did a great job. Okay, that's great. But when you're light, people gonna notice. And they're gonna see Christ in you, doing the work through you. This surpassing power, it's not from us. It's not our idea, as Moses said to Korah. It's the idea at all. This is God's idea. Glory living inside of you that's doing the work, not you. Your vessel. And if he's using you as his sanctuary, as his shelter, and doing his wonderful deeds to you. Kiss God's feet. It's more than an honor and a because it's those who are called by God, not based on what was based on his call to us, as, as it is written in Romans, chapter nine. You're not gonna be stagnant. You're not gonna this, I always like to say this, you're not gonna sit you're gonna go out there and say, man, you, you're not gonna believe this. I don't even, I was some people say I was on the verge of killing myself. And I saw and said, God, it has a call on your life and my life has turned around. One eighty. I'm gon- I'm completely, I'm a new person. And I'm not ashamed of my testimony, cause then I can express to people who are on the verge of suicide. And then you can be a light, you can be a salt, salty. Think about it from a scientific point of view. You know, you apply salt to wounds, it heals wounds, it cleanses the wounds. And, uh, to some people, people just look at it, salt is giving flavor to food. So let, let's maintain that zest, that flavor. And that appeal. We are all God's appeal to the people. And we want God to rule others through us, the way God used other vessels to rule us. To have sweet fellowship with him and his son. The Lord said to Aaron, you will have, have no inheritance in their land. In their land, nor will you have among them. I am your share and your inheritance among the Israelites. See. We are God's possession and God is our possession. And Jesus has on the fact that the birds, they don't have a storehouse. But God takes care of them. Don't worry how much money, don't worry about that. I'm not saying you don't, to go straight from being responsible and, and responsible stewards, yes, there's mu- ma- money management, but don't let that be the rock foundation of your life. I mean, uh, I know we've been taught, that was a part of the whole, uh, American dream anthem. In the house with white picket fences and you have foreign Ks and you have your securities all lined up, you got your death plot lined up, oh, then you should be good, you can enjoy life to the fullest. But if we look at it, Jesus didn't have a penny to his name and he had a burial. We can, we can go to Elijah, he had nothing to eat and God sent him some, the birds got some meat for him to eat. What I'm saying is that, once we know that God is our provider, no matter what we, I, our physical means to be our God. We go to God and he will make a way. I've seen it, have, uh, uh, I, I remember there was a problem with my boiler and somebody just gave me, I kid you not, and my wife can attest to this. It's gave me five hundred dollars. What's up, we know this guy who was and, and he says, hey, I've heard, uh, I, I was just astounded, I said, this is, this gotta be God. We were, we were like fong short, how are we gonna get this done and? So, I, I mean, uh, trust me, I was always, um, always stubborn. I've always thought that, hey, don't talk to me about all that. I just need to save this money and make sure that I can have enough for a rainy day. But God, he's our provider, he will always give us, um, show us his providing hand, his plans and provisions, oh my goodness. Um, this, this amazing. So, um, I'm gonna go to Ezekiel chapter four, forty-four, verse twenty-eight. And we're gonna see that repeated again regarding the Levites. The Levites were not to have any possessions, nothing. They were strictly supposed on the services of God and the sanctuary and, um, um, Ezekiel chapter, uh, forty-four, verse twenty-eight. And I just want you to see that God's truth is solid on every corner. There's no discrepancies. The truth does not go to the left or right, it, the truth is just goes straight. It's a sharp sword. Okay. You might say, wow, this sounds like he's saying the same thing. Well, uh, yeah. Alright, here again, Ezekiel chapter forty-four, verse twenty-eight. I am to be the only inheritance the priests have. You are to give them no possessions in Israel. I will be their possession. So then now we can make another bridge. Wherever your treasure is, there, yeah, there your heart will be also. If you love this world and the things of this world, it's gonna fall away, it's gonna, there's gonna be people who's gonna steal your belongings, it's, it's gonna, it's, it's, it's subject to decay. Have treasures in heaven. And the treasures that we have, the, the wisdom, the knowledge and understanding and fear and love is all in the ultimate treasure, Jesus Christ. He's our treasure. He's our possession. And we see that in Hebrews chapter eleven where J, uh, Moses, I mean, in our eyes, he was a billionaire. He had it all. What he knew what his reward was. So instead of indulging in the fleeting, uh, pleasures of sin and the treasures of Egypt, he decided to suffer with the oppressed. Cause he saw value in Jesus, his ultimate reward. And that should now listen. If God blesses you with physical blessings. We see that throughout the scriptures. As long as we know that these possessions do not possess us. As long as we know that these possessions do not become our idols. The more we cling on to God, I'm telling you everlasting pleasure is, is in his right hand. He's the one that created pleasure itself. And, um, as I go further down to verses twenty-seven to thirty, I'm gonna show you, um, talk to you about the threshing floor. Uh, you know, that's how they made bread, when they gleaned the, the wheat. But let me just, uh, take my time, so I'll, I'll be patient. It's give me one second. Okay. Lord said to Moses, speak to the Levites and say to them, when you receive from the Israelites the tithe, I was, um, I'm sorry, and said, I'll there in heaven's, their tithes. So I'm, I'm, I'm going to, he's just showing you that he's gonna provide for them. He has provisions for them because of their services. So, um, the Lord said, you will have no inheritance in their land, nor will you have any share among I'm your share and your inheritance among the Israelites. I give the Levites all the tithes in Israel as their inheritance in return for the work they do while serving at the tent of meeting. From now on and, um, from now on, the Israelites must not go near the tent of meeting. Or they will be, they will bear the consequences of their sin and will die. It is the Levites who are to do the work at the tent of meeting and bear the responsibility for first offense, um, any offenses they commit against it. This is a lasting ordinance, ordinance for the generations to come. They will receive no inheritance among the Israelites. Instead, I give to the Levites as their inheritance the tithes that the Israelites present as an offering to the Lord. That is, I said concerning them, they will have no inheritance among the Israelites. The Lord said to Moses, speak to the Levites and say to them, when you receive from the Israelites the tithe I gave you as your inheritance, you must present tithe as the Lord's offering will be reckoned to you as a grain or, or juice from the winepress. And this way you also will present an offering to the Lord from all the tithes you receive from the Israelites. From these, you must give the Lord's portion to Aaron, the priest. You must present as the Lord's portion the best and the holiest part of everything given to you. Say to the Levites, when you present the best part, it will be reckoned to you as a product of the threshing floor or the winepress. You and your households may eat the rest of it anywhere, for it is your work at the tent of meeting. By presenting the best part of it, you will not be guilty. Then you will not defile the holy offerings of the Israelites and you will not die. Again, the best part is Jesus, right? And, um, when they gleaned the fields, the process of making bread, they'll take the, the heads and they'll throw it up in the air. The straw that floated away, they didn't accept it at the threshing floor. Then they have the grain heads. They'll bring it into a rock. And then there's an ox that's going around that rock i- in a circular, uh, motion. It's tethered to, um, I, I would say steak. And as an oxen will tread the grain. And after that, then that's, that's how they made bread. And we know what that is. The servant is the ox, that's us. And the grain are the believers, we just discipline them. You see that in First Timothy chapter, I believe, chapter five. So all these are symbols of God preparing his elect, his chosen ones, his redeemed ones. He's separating them from the chaff. And he's bringing them to his barn. And we're gonna go to, uh, Luke, uh, chapter three, verse sixteen, this threshing floor, the winnowing fork. And it's Jesus. And then we can go to Jeremiah chapter fifteen again. He has a winnowing fork in his hand and he's gonna separate the wicked from the righteous. So let's go to Luke chapter three, verse sixteen. And, uh, we'll see, nu- nu- number's nineteen is, um, is this Judaism? So I'll go briefly and we won't, um, be long with that, it's a short chapter. So I'm just trying to, uh, show that we are almost near to a close and we thank you for your patience. Luke chapter three, verse sixteen. And this is how we are separated. I baptize, this is John the Baptist speaking to the crowds, the masses. I water. For the one who's more powerful than I will come, the straps of those, as the straps of whose sandals I am not worthy to untie. He will baptize you with the Holy Spirit and fire. His winnowing fork is in his hand to clear his threshing floor and to gather the wheat into his barn. But he will burn up the chaff with unquenchable fire. So he's gonna, again, he's gonna bring us to his barn. He's gonna bring us to the house, in my father's house, there's many matches. Yes, you my first fruit, I'm gonna bring you to my barn. I'm gonna bring you to Shabbat. I'm gonna bring you into my resting place. You don't have to worry about the brides, you don't have to worry about the pricks and the thorns and thistles. For the meek shall inherit the earth. The wicked will perish. Though you look for them, you will not find them. All who rage against you will surely perish. They'll be as nothing as all. For I am the Lord, by my hand and says to you, I will help you. So all those who rage against you and persecute you and, and call you all kinds of names. Yes, we have remorse for those who are even wounding us. But we know that we are going to enter that rest, that resting place. Who is Jesus Christ? Let's go to numbers nineteen. And Judaism again is a foreshadow. It's, uh, all these rituals, it's, it, it's just a shadow of the Holy Spirit. And Jesus said to Nicodemus, you need to be born of water and the spirit. No one from the realm of the flesh, no flesh will enter he that we possess or cursed. You can't take those items. And we see that echoed in Joshua with Achan, when he stole something and he, from Jericho. His whole family was destroyed. And then, and just to let you know, don't love this world, all the things of this world. And I know because of our sinful nature, we, we, we are addicted to this world. This is, we were born in this realm, we think, well, this is, this is what I see. What am I supposed to do in the meantime? I mean, I love the things I've done and, but I know it's a painful process. The moment you realize that you are struggling with your sins, that's a good sign, because that means a light is revealing to you, convicting you. You're starting to say, I, I know that was wrong, I, I shouldn't have done that. Holy Spirit is ruling you from this world. Sometimes we gotta be locked up in a room and like a heroin addict and sweat it out. Even to the point where our bones ache. It's painful, but you'll be free from these addictions. Okay, let's go to, um, numbers chapter nineteen. Just spare me one moment.
Yes, good evening.
I'm, I'm ready. The Lord said to Moses and Aaron, this is a requirement of the law that the Lord has commanded. Tell the Israelites to bring you a red heifer without defect or blemish, and that has never been under yoke. Give it to Eliezer, the priest. It is to be taken outside the camp and slaughtered in his presence. Then Eliezer, the priest, is to take some of its blood on his finger and sprinkle it seven times toward the front of the tent of meeting. While he watches the heifer, while he watches the heifers to be burned. It's hide, flesh, blood and intestines. The priest is to take some cedar wood, hyssop and scarlet wool and throw them into the burning, onto the burning heifer. After that, the priest must wash his clothes and bathe himself with water. He may then come into the camp, he, he may, he may then come into the camp, but he will be ceremonially unclean until evening. The man who burns it must also wash his clothes and bathe with water. And he too will be unclean till evening. A man who is clean shall gather up the ashes of the heifer and put them in the ceremonial, ceremonially, the ceremonially clean place outside the camp. They are to be kept by the Israelite community for use of the water of cleansing. It is for purification from sin. The man who gathers up the ashes of the heifer must also wash his clothes and he too will be unclean till evening. This will be a lasting ordinance for the Israelites and for the foreigners residing among them. Whoever touches a human corpse will be unclean for seven days. They must purify themselves with the water on the third day and on the seventh day. Then they will be clean. But if they do not purify themselves on the third and seventh days, they will not be clean. If they fail to purify themselves after touching a human corpse, they defile the Lord's tabernacle. They must be cut off in Israel. Because the water cleansing has not been sprinkled on them, they are unclean. Their uncleanness remains on them. This is the law that applies when a person dies in a tent. Anyone who enters the tent and anyone who's in it will be unclean for seven days. And every open container without a lid fastened on it will be unclean. Anyone out of the open who touches someone who has been killed with a sword or someone who has died a natural death, or anyone who touches a human bone or grave will be unclean for seven days. For the unclean person, put some ashes from the burnt purification offering into a jar and pour fresh water over them. Then the man who is ceremonially clean is to take some dip it in the water and sprinkle this tent and all the furnishings and the people who are there. He must also sprinkle anyone who has touched a human bone or grave, or anyone who has been killed, or anyone who has natural death. The man who is clean is to sprinkle those who are unclean on the third and seventh days. And on the seventh day, he is to purify them. Those who are being cleansed must wash their clothes and bathe with water and that evening they will be clean. But if those who are unclean do not purify themselves, they must be cut off from this community. Because I'll the sanctuary of the Lord. The water of cleansing has not been sprinkled on them and unclean. This is a lasting ordinance for them. The man who sprinkles water of cleansing must also wash his clothes. And anyone who touches the water of cleansing will be unclean till evening. Anyone, anything that ha- that an unclean person touches becomes Anyone, anything that had, that an unclean person touches becomes unclean. And anyone who touches it becomes unclean till evening. So let's say it's an unclean person, a woman is uh, she has a period, she touches a cup. If you touch that cup, you are considered unclean. The cup has to be uh sealed, has to have a lid. But we, we see that this is what it's all, it all boils down to this. We did wrong. Adam made the wrong choice. And now we're banished from him. And now we are under, they were at this, these strict, these strict rules. And God was adamant. He affirmed that you cannot be in my presence. No way. You have ran away from my presence. And I banished you because you have our naked. You're incomplete without me. Well, I'm gonna go to John, chapter three. And uh they talk about the woman who had the issue of blood. She was not supposed to touch Jesus. She had an issue of blood. Now, if Jesus was any uh ordinary according to this testimony in Numbers, he's supposed to uh wash himself, wash his clothes. Cause then he would be considered, the, the priests who touched someone with an issue of blood, a, a dead corpse, they were considered unclean. Now we're gonna see the beauty and power of the Holy Spirit. Spirit face like that there. Almost off from the top of the chapter and I wanna read. Now there was a Pharisee, a man named Nicodemus. This is John, chapter three. Who was a member of the Jewish ru- uh ruling council? He came to Jesus and said, Rabbi, we know that you are a teacher who has come from God. For no one could perform the signs you are doing if God were not with you. Jesus replied, very truly I tell you, no one can see the kingdom of God unless they're born again. Or be born when they are old. Surely they can enter uh second time into their mother's womb to be born. Very truly I tell you, no one can enter the kingdom of God unless they are born of water and the Spirit. Flesh gives birth to flesh, but the Spirit gives birth to spirit. You should not be surprised by my saying, you must be born again. You cannot enter the kingdom of God if you're not born again. Period. You cannot come to my wedding banquet without wedding clothes. Period. We, uh, and I'm the chief. I don't think we understand that we're being translated from a, a realm of death to the realm of t- life. Because of Jesus, he was commissioned to die. He was commissioned to redeem a remnants of people. We read later on, well, you know, Jesus said, Jesus loved the world that and this is a false doctrine. It's very, very, very clever. People not gonna have a sense of urgency when they say, oh, well, God loves everybody. Well, you know, I'll wait um, I'll wait um fifty, I'll wait um six years old and then I'll get my life together and then I'll focus on the Lord. Tell you, God did not die for the world. He said, all that the Father has given me will come to me. And those who come to me, I shall no wise cast out. So, you know, people, what I'm trying to tell you, be a berean. After this Bible study, go to other Bible studies. Go watch the TV. Go read the Bible on your own. Talk to God on one-on-one. Ask him, hey, I need some wisdom, cause I'm, I'm, I'm still confused. Well, you know, I'm gonna read you something where Jesus clearly says that he did not die for the world, but we must be born again. We are a unique people. We are set apart. That's what holy is. You know, when somebody's about to pick up, um, play a pickup, a basketball pickup game, they set people apart to join their team. So it comes from God. God says, hey, I'm gonna take this one, I'm gonna take that one. Yes, I'm gonna use this one. I'm going to raise up Moses. He's gonna deliver my people. I have set him apart to fulfill my purpose, to fulfill my will. Let's go to John, chapter seventeen, verse six. And I'm going to show you what the word says. I have revealed you to those whom you gave me out of the world. They were yours, you gave them to me. And this is the disciples he's talking about. They were yours, you gave them to me, and they have obeyed your word. Now they know that everything you have given me comes from you. For I gave them the words you gave me, and they accepted them. They knew with certainty that I came from you, and they believed that you sent me. I pray for them. I'm not praying for the world, but for those you have given me, for they are yours. So people will say, well, God loves everybody, you know, we're, we're all God's creation, we're all the sons and daughters. But why would Jesus say to the Pharisees, you are your father, the devil? He is alive from the begi- he was a murderer from the beginning. Praying for them. I'm not praying for the world, but for those you have given me, for they are yours. All I have is yours and all you have is mine, and glory has come to me through them. So we realize that God sent his son to redeem and elect uh remnants people. And we see that pictured, the foreshadow picture of the Israelites. Were all the, were all the Egyptians saved? Because according to scriptures, God so loved the world, God destroyed the firstborn of the Egyptians. Even the firstborn of their cattle. Every firstborn animal perished. Why? Because of human humanity. Because the world, from us, we were in darkness. Humanity took the firstborn son, Jesus Christ. And God does not think the way we do. And to avenge his son's death, he destroyed the firstborn of all the Egyptians. So there you have it. Judaism is, is pointing to the Holy Spirit. The Holy Spirit is the water. And that's why when Jesus was talking to the Samaritan woman, he says, and he was referring to his spirit. We read in John, chapter four. Again. Let's, let's make these connections and then I'll, I'll come to a closing and Scott and um um, and encourage us later on in this Bible study. This is John, chapter four, verse ten. If you speak of God and who it is that asked you for a drink, you would have asked him, and he would give you living water. And she's questioning, uh, uh, Father Jacob, they make this well and, you know, we drank from it. What, what are you talking about? And Jesus answered, everyone who drinks this water will thirst again. But whoever drinks the water I give them will never thirst. Indeed, the water I have become in them a spring of water welling up to eternal life. This water, Judaism, worship, it's the Holy Spirit. Without the Holy Spirit, we're unclean wretches. Without the Holy Spirit, there's no eternal life. Without the Holy Spirit, there's no resurrection. We'll go to Revelation, chapter twenty-one, and people there, oh, Jesus, no, God, you should make this connection. Jesus clearly said, so what I'm gonna give this, give thirst. Revelation, chapter twenty-one, verse six. Going down. It is done. I know the beginning and the end. To the thirsty, I will give water without cost from the spring of the water of life. And I'll read further. This is a promise to all of us. Those who are victorious will inherit all this, and I will be their God, and they will be my children. Again, but the cowardly, the unbeliever, the vile, the murderers, the sexual immoral, those who practice magic arts, the idolaters, and all the liars, they will be consigned to the fiery lake of burning sulfur. This is the second death. Jesus is the one that gives us this loving, living water so we can be alive. I have come that they may have life and have it more abundantly, have this water in abundance. You will never thirst again. You never have that empty void. You won't be chasing things other this, other, other than me. Summertime, I forget, I don't know the name, but this, a, a Roman soldier said, the way we find pleasure, we think we find a fulfillment and getting more, it's like drinking saltwater. You keep drinking saltwater and you keep being thirsty over and over. You think you'll just get another cup of saltwater and you're still thirsty. Only Jesus can satisfy us with his Holy Spirit. We are at peace. We're no longer thirsty. Just like that prodigal son. We, we can be well-fed and have clothes. And we can be in sweet fellowship, a reconciled, peaceful relationship with our Father, who we have abandoned. Again, I will encourage everyone, please be a berean. Scriptures for yourself. Examine the scriptures. Eat them, drink them. Do whatever you gotta do. Slice them up in portions. Eat them. Share the scriptures that you eat with others. Cause a lot of people don't realize that they are spiritually in famine. They're, they are starving. All the food you can eat here in this world, all the clothes you can have, you are hungry and you are miserable and naked. You need to read these words because these words were not only used to create this whole universe. These words were used, are used to regenerate us. It's not this intellectual knowing and say, I know all the twelve tribes of Judea, I know, so I know all the twelve, I know disciples, so that's we read these words so we can be renewed, we're regenerated. And we are being conformed to the image of our Lord and King and God, Jesus Christ. And the more we resemble him, the more we like him, the more we will enjoy our freedom in his presence. Brother Scott?
Yes, thank you, brother. And we are hoping that tonight's study was of a vast benefit to you beloved ones, even you know, um you, you, everything that you go through is supposed to be a learning experience. You, you're supposed to learn from these things. It's supposed to make you better and not bitter. And to be um to, to be quite frank with you, that um, I'll put it in the category of snafu of what happened earlier, which had, which caused us to have to um um, switch out links. Even that served as a purpose. Because we took the guilty parties, cause they were guilty. Now, whether they acknowledged their guilt or not, that's on them. But the Father, the Son, the Spirit, and we know that they were guilty for what they've done because they brought an element of Satan to tonight's glorious study. But yet they got prayed for. Scripture clearly says, pray for your enemies. Bless those which persecute you. And in our brother Lyndon's prayer, he prayed for such ones. For these ones to turn around would bless our hearts, though we may not know it, but it would definitely bless the Father's heart. Remember, scripture says that Jesus leaves in ninety-nine. I'm la- I'm laughing because our Lord and Savior, as Lyndon prayed him into our study tonight, he actually left our study to go after those ones who hacked Bible study. Yes, scripture says that the great shepherd leaves the ninety-nine and goes after that one. You know what, beloved? Let's read that so we can get that into our, our thinking and, and let it just bless, let it just bless us um with these words. Beloved, that's found in Matthew, chapter eighteen verses twelve through fourteen. Once again, we're looking at Matthew, chapter eighteen, verses twelve through fourteen. Matthew, chapter eighteen, verses twelve through fourteen reads as follows. How think ye, if a man have a hundred sheep and one of them be gone astray, doth he not leave the ninety-nine and goeth into the mountains and seek that which is gone astray? And if it be so that he find it, verily I say unto, he rejoices more of that sheep than of the ninety-nine which went not in stray. Even so, it is not the will of your Father, which is in heaven, that one of these little ones should perish. Beloved, my, my, my brother Lyndon always says, he's got confirmations, confirmations, confirmations. Did I not say, and this was not a part of my closing thought, did I not say earlier how God doesn't want any of us to perish? And didn't we just now read the words of our Lord Jesus Christ where he says, even so, it is not the will of your Father, which is in heaven, that one of these little ones should perish? Beloved, there's a saying, life tosses you a lemonade, turn around, no, life tosses you a lemon, you turn around and make lemonade. And my daughter, she uh wrote a little um, uh, a little sheet about me to her school. And one of the things, it says, uh, your favorite drink, and she put iced lemonade. So beloved brethren, we were tossed a lemon earlier. And by the grace of God, we was able to take that and make it into some lemonade, something that's pleasant, a pleasant drink for all of us to enjoy. Brother Lyndon had mentioned earlier, fellowship, worship, and praise. And that's where life, listen. We started here. We'll continue it. I didn't say complete it. We'll continue it throughout eternity. Because fellowship with one another, worship and praise to the Father, the Son, and the Spirit will never end. It will be ongoing and for all of eternity. Beloved, again, these studies, I really hope that they are speaking to your hearts. I really hope that they are shaping and molding your spirits. I really hope that it's making men and women of Christ out of you. Again, the book of Numbers is a very un- um touched book. And what I mean by that is not much time spent in Numbers as people would spend in, let's say, John and the Psalms. But oh my gosh, are we finding such rich, rich, rich treasures in here? Such rich treasures. It ma- it, it, it makes me think of early America. How everyone, uh, traveled out to California, cause there are gold in them bar heels was the, um, expression back in the day. Well, there's gold in them bar Old Testament. Genesis, Exodus, Leviticus, Numbers, we have yet to touch Deuteronomy. There's treasures throughout the book, but again, we are touching upon some unfamiliar territory, Leviticus, Numbers, Exodus, Deuteronomy, and boy, are we finding some God given glorious treasures in these books. Beloved, as we bring tonight's study to a close, once again, the floor is open and welcome to any questions, comments, concerns. Please bring it to the table. Um, we'll try to develop it. If we feel it's deep enough, um, what I mean is too deep to make a coverage in this closing, brother Lyndon and I will hit the bricks, so to speak, the spiritual bricks. And we will bring to you an answer. Just wanna make mention, um, it's a little bit, uh, something on, on, on a level of levity. And it's a blessing, actually, um. Brother Lyndon and I's adopted niece Mimi, she brought us a question that was a heavy hitter. And the question that she brought to us was the children of Israel, they used the sacrificial system that's found in Leviticus and Numbers to get forgiveness of their sins. So what are they doing today to get forgiveness of their sins, being that they don't belong or believe in the Lord Jesus Christ? And that's a very good question. The answer to that is they're not getting forgiveness of sins. Remember, scripture says, no man comes unto the Father but by me. So if you're not coming to the Father by the way of Lord Jesus Christ, all of your sacrifices, all of your works are in vain. They are breaking the Sabbath and tonight we relearned in Numbers chapter fifteen, what happened to that man that was guilty for breaking the Sabbath? He was stoned to death. So these ones are dying in their sins. Israel as a whole, has a veil over their eyes, they're blinded. At God's chosen time, He removed the veil and allowed him to come into His kingdom. Right now, as we're speaking, there were scores of Jews that are turning into Christian Israelites or Christian Jews. My daughter, she brought to, um, the floor, uh, brother Lyndon and I throughout the week. The question, Daddy, Uncle Lyndon, what if somebody has tattoos when they were in the world and they become Christians? Does that, does those, does those tattoos still hold the same value to them as it was, uh, before they became Christians? And the answer to that is no. Again, let me just illustrate, there was an older, uh, gentleman, um, I was listening to this pastor and he was telling the story. There was old gentleman, he used to be a heavy alcoholic and he got greatly saved and he put away alcohol. And, um, him and some of the, uh, brethren went out for some, um, malts. This was back in the days when you would go to, as brother Lyndon would say, you'd go out to dinner when you, um, um, trying to, uh, woo your date. Uh, well, some of him and the brothers, they went out to the malt shop, like a Sonic, and they all sat down and drank some, um, the, the, the real deal milkshakes. And the question was put to him, to the former alcoholic, uh, the brother was a former alcoholic. Brother, why aren't you engaging in one of these fine, uh, uh, chocolate malts? He said, God gave me a new heart, but he didn't give me a new tummy. In other words, he wrecked his stomach from all of that alcoholic drinking. So I'm saying I have to say this, the brothers or sister who has those tattoos, they don't mean that same value to them as it did. Um, as I mentioned before, there's this product called Wrecking Bomb, which removes tattoos. But for whatever reason, if the person chooses not to have the tattoos removed, that's all right. Cause as brother Lyndon's made mention, that brother, that sister is going to get a new glorified untattooed body. Like my body, this body needs some glasses. Um, I'll get a body that won't need glasses. We'll all get a body, whatever um, ailments that we have or whatever, um, disabilities that we have will not follow us into paradise. So again, to answer the question, that brother or sister that has tattoos, those tattoos no longer mean anything. If they're still sporting them, um, that's okay, that's okay, because they're now have a renewed heart. Remember, it's the transformation of the heart. It's not so much to put in the way, the filter, the flesh, but putting on a clean conscience. Would that brother, sister go out and get some additional tattoos? The answer to that is absolutely not. So again, beloved, um, there are any questions, comments or concerns, please bring it tonight, um, bring it to our attention. Um, if it requires depth, we will definitely engage you as the week goes on. But please bring your questions, comments and concerns. And just one more thought on a level of joy. We spoke about wine, uh, being a part of their, um, offering and wine speaks of joy. Last week, uh, was Sister Gail's birthday and once again, we say to her, happy belated birthday, uh. Sister Gail is now, uh, turned twenty-five. She's been twenty-five for the last past, uh, about fifteen, twenty years. So she's one of the most, uh, loveliest, uh, standing twenty-five year olds that I've ever met. But she said, um, she so loved these studies that when her daughter had taken her out to juniors to celebrate her birthday, that she took it to go because she didn't want to miss Bible studies. So we bless Sister Gail for her faithfulness. Uh, she's been with us from the very beginning and praying that God will bless her to be with us till we finish all sixty-six books of the Bible. And you, just to show that she, she values hearing the word of God from brother Lyndon and I. She prays for us, she prays over us. And y'all who are praying for us silently in your prayers, we thank you for your prayers because it's not an easy journey. It's not like I tell you, uh, we're at this eight days a week. Soon as we hang up, um, I forward the recording to brother Lyndon, brother Lyndon then edits it. Um, as a matter of fact, while brother Lyndon was in his studies, I was preparing a senor, his, uh, YouTube channel, which is Lyndon Mason, all one word, but don't worry, I'll send it to you. And, um, it's not easy getting out these studies. It's a blessing. Oh my gosh, it's a blessing, but it's not easy and it's a task that I will owe, um, I will undergo over and over and over. And to reiterate the words of my ten-year-old daughter, Daddy, you get back on that phone, you sent out a new Google meets link, cause we not gonna let Satan think that he defeated us. So I bless my daughter for such wisdom. I bless God for blessing her with that kind of wisdom. So again, without further ado, are there any questions, comments or concerns? My daughter Giovanna, she's the first one to take the floor. Go ahead, baby, nice and loud. You have a question, comment or concern? Okay, she wants to close in prayer. Is any question, comments and concerns from any of you beloved?
Um, good evening, uh.
Go ahead. This is my niece, Mimi. This is Lyndon and I's adopted niece, Mimi. Go ahead, niece.
Uh, I do have a prayer request. Um, both me and my boyfriend have been trying to get promotional, um, positions within our companies. I'm trying to, I'm at the end of a process and I'm just praying that it all goes well and successfully and smooth. And we're just praying that he gets, um, contacted by one or two, both jobs. Um, so that's my prayer request.
Okay, well, excellent. We'll definitely take that to, um, we'll include that in our clothing, our closing prayer, as Sister Gail brings, um, that, um, to a close. She'll definitely, um, not forget to mention that. Any, anything additional from any one of you beloved ones? Okay, so without further ado, Sister Gail, can you bring tonight's closer study? Uh, my daughter reminded me, Daddy, um, I want sister, I want Sister Gail to do the closing prayer. So Sister Gail, can you bring, um, our niece, Sister Mimi and her concerns over her and her boyfriend's, uh, uh, position and, um, and their work, as well as the, uh, snafu that we had earlier with the hacking? Can you bring that as a part of your closing prayer as we, um, bring tonight's study to a close, Sister Gail? Sister G?
Yes, I was having some trouble.
That's okay.
Dear heavenly Father, we thank you, Lord. Thank you, Lord, for this Bible study lesson, oh God. We thank you, Lord, for the teachers, oh God. We ask, oh God, that you bless them in a mighty way, oh God. In the name of Jesus. We ask, oh Lord, that you bind up all technical difficulties, oh, oh God. Bind up Satan, oh God. In the name of Jesus. Lose your peace, your joy and your love on us, oh God. In the name of Jesus. We ask, oh God, that you touch uh, brother Scott's niece, oh God, and her friend, oh God. Show them favor, Lord, in the name of Jesus. For you, Lord, in the name of Jesus. Be with each and every one of us, oh God. Let us have wisdom, knowledge, understanding of your word, oh God. We just thank you, Lord, for your patience with us, oh God. We thank you, Lord, for who you are, oh God. We thank you, Lord, for your concern about us, oh God. We just thank you, Lord. We love you and we adore you, lift you up, we magnify your holy name, oh God. In the name of Jesus. We can do nothing without you. We are nothing without you. We are yours and you are ours, oh God. We ask, oh God, that you bless our families, oh Lord, keep them covered under the blood of Jesus, though weapon formed against them, oh God. We love and we adore you, God. We just thank you, Lord. We ask, oh God, that you bless our spouses, oh God. Bless us on our jobs, oh God. Give us traveling mercies, oh God. In the name of Jesus. We love and we adore you, God. We lift you up, we magnify your holy name, oh God. We ask, oh God, if it's not too much, oh God. We ask, oh God, that you comfort us, oh God, as we sleep on tonight, oh God. In the name of Jesus. You are for your glory, God, and we give you all the glory, honor and praises in Jesus.
Amen. Thank you, Sister Gail. So once again, beloved brethren, I'm going to send you the, um, link for Lyndon's YouTube page. You can listen to these studies. Um, and as Lyndon and I always encourage you, please hit the bricks, in other word, the Bible. Check out some studies against scripture to make sure that we are lining up with scripture and that, that, and not that we're trying to force scripture to line up to us. Um, next week I am going to be covering eighteen and nineteen. I'm going to be reviewing eighteen and nineteen as Lyndon takes us into twenty and twenty-one. Please read these scriptures in advance. Let these scriptures bless your heart. Let, please let the book of Numbers just talk to you in, in volumes. Again, we learned in, in Numbers chapter seventeen that the Confucius's and the Muhammad's and the, and the, um, Buddhists, these are not God called chosen men. Cause these ones were not raised from the dead. They're still in the ground. Their, their, their carcasses, as was mentioned in Numbers chapter fifteen, their carcasses are still fallen wherever they may lay and they're buried. But that one who was dead rose on the third day, has ascended into heaven, is at the Father's right hand side. And he's producing fruit, producing fruit, cause look at the fruit that he's producing here on October, um, October twelfth, twenty twenty-four. And there's yet more fruit that he'll be producing. So beloved, oh my, oh my, oh my, this dispels arguments. This dispels who's God's chosen men. God will destroy those who have tried to usurp, usurp the authority of his son. But oh beloved, we have the proof that God called Moses and he destroyed those who rebelled against Moses. But he also, he, 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 he also listened to voice, uh, to, to Moses's voice and Moses was an intercessor. God has chosen our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. And the only reason why God hasn't decimated all eight billion of us and this entire universe is because of our great intercessor, our great high priest, our great Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. With that in mind, I bless each and every one of y'all, then y'all's households. And may God watch over us and richly bless us in the name of the Father and of the Son and of the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Scott?
Yes.
I want y'all to keep my mother in prayer. When I got home from church, my sister, my mother had just left out in an ambulance. Um, the EMTs, I checked it with some devices, said she had water by her heart. So she's being examined at Dell State. Just looked her up.
Absolutely, absolutely. Brother Lyndon, you heard the request of our sister Margaret. Can you please? We're not, we don't, we don't, we don't, we don't like to do, we're gonna pray. We like to do, we all praying. Brother Lyndon, please, sister Margaret's, uh, mother, please. Lyndon, you there? All right, sis, I got you. Heavenly Father, please watch over my sister, which is the aunt of my children, Margaret Tate's mother. Father, please watch over her. There's, um, concerns that she has water near her heart. And Father, we're asking that you will drain that water and do whatever's necessary. I'm speaking with a, a, a limited information, but do whatever's necessary, Father, to restore Sister Margaret's mother to her as well as to her other siblings, as well as to the, her, their grand, her grands. That Sister Margaret's grand, Sister Margaret's mother's grands. Father, please bring restoration and peace, joy, a good report from the hospital, from the EMTs, from the medics that Sister Margaret's mother is recovering, is doing well, and she's on the road to recovery. Father, please let this be a prayer answered by the hearts of those who are joining in this prayer, as well as Sister Margaret's mother's children, her immediate children. In the name of the Father and of the Son and of the Holy Spirit, once again, please sustain her life. Amen.
Amen, thank you.
You're quite welcome.
Amen.
Is there anything else from any one of you other loved ones, uh, before we, uh, bid each and every one of y'all a good night? So once again, beloved brethren, God willing, we'll meet together at that same bat channel, that same bat station with the review of Numbers eighteen and nineteen with the coverage of twenty and twenty-one. May God again watch over y'all's loved ones. May he restore our dear Sister Margaret's mother's health. May he give that, um, that desired employment to Mimi and her companion. And love y'all from the Mason household as well as the Forces household to y'all's household. Love you all.
Good night.
Night.
Y'all.
All right now.